Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Gray Town Council Workshop of May 20th, 2025. This meeting is being held in person and online. The link to the online meeting can be found in the agenda posted on our website. I'll begin with roll call. Counselor Gass.
President.
Counselor Robinson.
President.
Counselor Johnson.
President.
Counselor Chappell. To my right is Town Manager Michael Foley, and we're also joined this evening by a number of staff and some guests for our topic this evening, which is Housing Needs Assessment and Land Use Ordinance Analysis that was conducted by Greater Portland Council of Governments. Did you want to kick us off?
Yes, I'll quickly introduce the item. Given the Town Council's recent retreat, which took place last fall, the Town Council had established a priority of housing for the community and to evaluate the options and needs and affordability of various housing. So I did want to mention that we will be receiving at some point a Housing Needs Assessment from the Greater Portland Council of Governments. They offered both the services of the Housing Needs Assessment and the Land Use Ordinance Analysis through grant funds that they had received. They offered that to all member communities, and given the priority that the Town Council had established, I took advantage of that opportunity on behalf of the town. And so today, we will only be hearing about the Land Use Ordinance Analysis, which that information will be used in the Housing Needs Assessment, which will be probably reported on early in 2026. There's some data that comes out late fall, reference to census data and housing tracts and things of that nature, that will be incorporated into the Housing Needs Assessment. But just wanted to let everyone know about that item. I've let the council previously know about these two items during managers' reports. But so here, from the Greater Portland Council of Governments, is Christian Rodman, who provided land use ordinance analysis and a presentation and a memo, which I shared with the council yesterday. And he's joining us to go over his findings and let, give the council an opportunity to ask any questions. There's no action necessarily needed. This is more for consideration potentially in the future. And so I'll introduce Christian at your, at your...
For leisure?
Yes, your leisure, yeah. To have him on.
Welcome, Christian. Thank you for joining us. Feel free to just, yeah, take the mic and lead us through your presentation.
Awesome. Great, thank you so much. Perfect, there it is. And is it okay to just let you know when I'm advancing?
Just tell me now.
Awesome. So actually, if we can just hop to the first one. Thank you so much. A pleasure to be here. And thank you to, to the, to Manager Foley for, you know, responding to our offer to pursue this series of services. It's something that we like to do. It's what we're here for. And so we're happy that we were able to, you know, fill an identified need by the council. So you already covered this manager, so I guess we can skip over to the next slide, which is just letting you know sort of how we approached this, this issue. And so what this is, we took a look at your relevant land use codes. It was subdivision and zoning, which includes your site plan standards. And we looked at it with the idea of, are there barriers that aren't necessarily, that don't have to be there to housing production? It is a, using that lens, going through all of those things, it is saying, hey, might there be things that could be changed, if so desired, to facilitate more housing? And again, this was just a thing that we had flexible funding to do, and we wanted to offer our member municipalities the service to do so. So we were happy to be able to do it for you. If we could skip to the next one, that'd be great. Importantly, what this is not, I'm going to skip to the bottom here. As I was saying, we were talking about one issue only. We were only thinking about housing and housing production. So there might be other town values, there might be other desires or issues that are reasonable and desirable to pursue. Those might be economic development, those might be resilience, those might be any aesthetics. There could be any number of things that could be weighed against the issue that we are talking about today, and we did not include any of them. For our own sanity and well-being, and also for the purpose of like giving you the best product in this particular lane, we only thought about housing. So with that established, just want to make clear that this is not a value judgment. This isn't saying you should or shouldn't do the following things. It is simply saying, these are options that you have. We are not requesting that you do them, we are not telling you that you should do them, we're just identifying them as levers that you can potentially pull. If we can skip to the next, that'd be great. Thank you so much. So the way, again, just getting a little bit more into the weeds of what we were particularly looking at, is anytime that flexibility was unnecessarily restricted, we sort of flagged it, as this might be an impediment to housing. So there are certain things that, you know, you're obviously going to meet state, state minimums that are protecting health and safety. If it wasn't clear that that was the rationale behind something, then we would flag it. Because we would say, hey, if you were more flexible, possibly more housing could be unavailability. And again, we just looked through your subdivision, your site plan, and your zoning standard. So that's all in your land use code. It's pretty dry reading, as these often are. The report is, I apologize, similarly dry because of this drawing from that material. But we tried to say, hey, here's what the language says, here's how we interpret it, and here are ways that you could potentially make different choices if you so wanted. Thanks. Oh, we're getting into a rhythm now, I love it. All right, cool, thanks. So this is, I think, something that gets forgotten sometimes when we talk about our hallowed land use codes that, you know, may have been adopted decades and decades ago. Sometimes it seems like these codes exist because incredible wise experts decided that this was the way that the world should be, or it was, you know, rigorously scientifically determined that this is the optimum way for, you know, humanity to grow and develop. In reality, the folks that adopted land use codes in most towns across our state were just as good and just as flawed as any of us in this room. They were people, and they could have made different decisions, and you can have different value judgments, and you can make different choices for different outcomes if you so desire. So just acknowledging that it was humans that, you know, made and adopted the code for a variety of reasons, and now as humans that are considering the code, you all can make different decisions if you so choose. So, getting into the meat of it, and I think the presentation will probably take, I can do it as quick as probably 10 minutes, could draw it out a little bit more, and we'll have plenty of time for discussion and questions if that's desired. But if we decide that we're like really loving talking about subdivision and zoning codes, I can draw it out as long as you all want. So specifically in subdivision, some of the things that were, that are set in your code as requirements, that we noticed that could be reconsidered, include these listed items: minimum street frontage, buffers, utility undergrounding, minimization of building views from existing roads, clustering within forested areas, and usable open space requirements. And so I'm just going to walk through those really quick. Minimum street frontage is, you know, when you are developing a parcel, that parcel needs to have a certain amount of space onto a public right-of-way. And I believe that currently, there is an exception in your, in your land use code that says, under certain circumstances, if you're on a cul-de-sac in a subdivision, you can go down to a 60-foot minimum width for, for a street frontage. But if you're not on a cul-de-sac, if you're not in a subdivision, if you don't meet certain other standards, then it has to be whatever the regularly required amount is. In the village center, you have very limited, you know, requirements for minimum street frontage. Once you get out of the village center, though, it starts to be, you know, 100, 150 feet, maybe more than that. And so the question is, again, foundationally, is that serving a purpose that is, smacked that microphone, sorry, is that serving a purpose that is beneficial? And are the trade-offs, you know, are the costs worth the benefit that is, is coming from that? Similarly, buffers, I think for subdivisions, it's like a 50-foot required buffer from the streets, so that you essentially can't see the development as well. And we're going to get into sort of some examples of what is the purpose of subdivision, because reasonable people could disagree. There's a particular item that was talking about on projects under a certain size that utilities must be undergrounded. I know that that's like an aesthetic and resilience-oriented item, which is very, very cool. But some might argue that for smaller projects, maybe it makes sense to have utilities be above ground, because that might be cheaper. But for a bigger project, you know, maybe they'd have the, the capital to swing it. And then these sort of last items are getting into that idea of, what do we want from subdivision? Why are we encouraging people to go this path? So if we could pop to the next slide. If we imagine that we have an open lots, and this could be any size that you want it to be, whatever is comfortable, it could be a football field, it could be an acre, it could be your yard. The question with subdivision, and that's literally just when we're taking a parcel and dividing it up, is the emphasis on the way that people perceive it as they go through gray and experience gray? Or is the purpose on preservation and open space? And again, that's not a value judgment, that's just a, you know, which one is, which one is the purpose? Because that helps you go down different roads. And I would say that right now, it feels like the emphasis of the land use code is towards the experience that somebody gets and the perception they have as they travel through gray. If we could move to the next slide. So if you imagine in that scenario that we have 16 units that we're going to be putting, that could be, we'll say, single-family houses, I believe, if you were to be traveling on any side of this square, this hypothetical parcel, you would, you know, only be perceiving a certain number of houses at any given time, because they're set back from the lot, they're spaced out appropriately, it's sort of just, they're, they're more spread out across more land. What that also means, though, is that more of the parcel in question, our football field, our yard, our parcel, has been taken up by housing. And so if we move to the next slide, you can see that you could cluster items, and the preservation would be significantly greater. You wouldn't have as many roads, driveways, sort of front yards conflicting with one another across the entirety of the space. Obviously, this is a slightly extreme ham-fisted example, but hopefully it catches to that point, that the less you leave alone by not requiring space to be taken up, the more you're allowed to sort of just let it be and preserve it. So it could be farmland, it could be forest, it could be, you know, marsh, and all of those are just left alone and preserved as part of the subdivision standard, as opposed to saying you must spread your homes out in this particular way. What that would do, though, is that if you do imagine traveling on a road on any of these sides, is you would be seeing more housing at any given time, and it would seem more dense. So instead of this, and you'll also note that it's closer to the edge. So instead of driving down a road and, you know, a forested buffer, and maybe you, every now and then you notice a driveway that's going in, and there's a little bit of a glinting light in the forest, you might see four townhomes. And again, is that good or bad? I am not here to tell you that. But the, the end result can be different, depending on which one that you're hoping your land use code emphasizes. If we could go to the next. So again, you can go either way on that call, and somewhere in between, frankly. But it feels like right now, the land use code is weighted towards the, the perception of a user going through town. If that was not the case, and the council desired for there to be more emphasis on just explicitly preserving land, leaving open spaces, leaving forests, then there might be some implications for a particular class of subdivisions that you speak to in your land use code, in your subdivision section, called residential open space subdivisions. These are, the, the way that the code is written, it seems like these are sort of the, a desired outcome, and it speaks to things like a density bonus. But when you sort of follow it to the end of the trail, there's not really actually any bonus for pursuing it. Also, they're limited in terms of, you know, what zones you can pursue them in, they only allow single-family homes, there are particular dimensional standards, which, again, none of those are necessarily good or bad, but it feels like it's getting set up as a, we would like this kind of development to be made. And then there's a number of restrictions that seem to make that development less economical, less possible, less available in different circumstances. So that would be one path that the council could potentially focus on if so chose, if, if so desired, to really focus on what is the kind of development pattern that we are hoping for, and which dimensional standards are actively or inactively getting in the way of that. I think next slide would be great. This, outside of the, the residential open space subdivision, and speaking to subdivision more generally, there is a sort of foundational way that available density and development potential is calculated in the existing land use code, which is net residential area. And essentially, so you'll notice our, our parcel again, and this parcel, it seems to have sprouted a bunch of rocks, maybe some wetlands. And under the current code, you would be subtracting those unusable or, you know, unbuildable areas from your net residential area, so that you would essentially not be counting the entire area of the parcel, you'd be counting only about half of it, which is not impacted by those things. One could make an argument that as long as you have this amount of space, and it is not being developed past a particular threshold, that having that space, you know, the, the wetlands, the rocky outcroppings, and building around them, if you have the same density and you just build around those items, maybe that's not a bad trade-off, because you can have more homes in the same area, the same area is still being preserved, you're just allowing for more density on it around these items. Certainly, you don't want to say, you know, build on wetlands, build on areas with 45-degree slopes or that are dangerous or anything like that. You want to make sure that people don't build where they shouldn't be building. But there's an open question about, should open space just count as open space, instead of, you know, subtracting rocky outcroppings and the like? Next slide, that'd be great, thanks. This is sort of, so that was our subdivision general overview. And now moving into zoning. And there's sort of two tiers of zoning opportunities, the small fry stuff, and then the, the bigger potential items. And we want to make sure that we talk about all of them. Just going through the small items first, in your zoning code, each of your zones is described with a purpose statement. And if you read each of your purpose statements, one thing that comes very, very quickly, clear very quickly, is that housing is not the focus. They talk about business and economics and sort of aesthetics, but they don't really tell you how residential might or might not be intended to fit into a, a lot of these zones. So for instance, housing might be allowed in the commercial zone, but the description of the commercial zone is sort of a little vague and very economic-focused. And so it might be worth taking a look and saying, do these land use, or do these zone descriptions meet with the council's intention? And is there any clarity and directive that could possibly be given about where housing is appropriate? And then using those, we could talk more broadly about dimensional standards and things like that. There's some definitions that are probably unnecessary, there's a definition of family that can get into some just complications that probably aren't worth going down, some state law regarding the definition of manufactured homes, that's mostly outside of the purview, but we wanted to flag them for you here. Sort of more narrow use cases, like there's a very particular requirement for if you're on a backlot, so you don't have frontage on a road, but there's a separate parcel, and you can get an easement through your neighbor's parcel, how wide that easement has to be. Does it need to be 50 feet, as it currently is? Maybe it could be 20, and maybe that would open up 15 parcels across your town. That's a complete guess, a complete, you know, but that would be one way that, again, things could possibly be eased up. Another thing we noticed briefly was that there's a whole section in your zoning descriptions about planned unit development. Often, planned unit development, folks are talking about residential planned unit development, sort of like, sort of a subdivision by a different name and a different style. Specifically in your land use code, you are talking about it as commercial, and it seems like it's very intended to allow different businesses to be sited on one site, developed by one developer, with a lot more flexibility, so that a better outcome can result. And so an open question would be, what if there were businesses and commercial on the first floor of these planned unit developments and residences on top? Would that be good, bad? Again, it's not a value judgment, it's just an opportunity for maybe some mixed-use development in a space that you already have carved out in your code, talking about planned unit development. So again, those are the smaller things that we just wanted to flag for you. The bigger things are, again, the sort of considerations of, at one point, a council or a group of staff made a use table, made a dimensional standards table, and designated where these things apply. And they did the best that they could with the knowledge and information that they had at the time, and if something is not working, you can tweak those. So if we can move on to the use tables, there's, you know, this is actually probably the smallest of the big ones, but again, we want to highlight it to you all, as all of these things are on the table for a council. So multifamily dwelling is, you know, you can imagine an apartment building, and there are standards for that. Whereas a multifamily development is, I think, according to your land use code, as I understand it, when one developer is interested in putting like multiple multifamily buildings on a site. And so multifamily dwelling is a conditional permitted use across most of the zones, whereas a multifamily development is only allowed in a certain number of them. And so will that open up a ton? Probably not. But again, if we're trying to remove barriers to housing, then just removing arbitrary barriers to where things can go might be a reasonable start. Similarly, the residential open space subdivision that we talked about earlier, that sort of seems to be what your code is nudging people towards, it's only allowed in RRA, LD, LD, and the MD sub-districts, or zoning districts. That's a huge amount of your land, to be clear. But would it make sense for it to be available in commercial or business transition or wellhead protection one? There, you know, there might be good arguments to be made, that if you're doing responsible development in the style that the Town Council decides is desirable, that maybe some of those restrictions could be rolled back. Moving on to the sort of two other issues of zoning, and particularly, these are the ones that really get into value judgments, and sort of just tough decisions, if we can move to the next one. Thank you. Dimensional standards. And this slide, or this chart isn't here to necessarily be read, it's reproduced in the report, it's available in your zoning code. This is the Building Construction Spatial Standards. And so on the left column, you'll see your zoning districts, your LDs, your RAs, your BD1s, your Cs. All of these obviously stand for things like commercial, medium density. But in the parlance of the, the chart, we'll stick with the, the letters that are designated here, VC and VCP. And each of them have a different set of standards. So for instance, in the VC zone, you are required to have a minimum setback of 10 feet. So any building you construct has to be 10 feet from the property line, 10 feet back. Whereas in the VCP zone, the Village Center proper zone, that requirement is down to zero feet. You can build rights of the lot line. When you get out to other areas, like the medium density zone, that minimum lot line setback becomes 50 feet. And so there's sort of an open question as to, what are these based on? Are they rights? And are they serving the best purpose right now? So if you wished, the VC zone could go down to zero feet lot line as well. The MD zone could go down to 10 or 20. They're all just numbers that can be changed. And they have developed a certain development pattern, which again, is neither right nor wrong, it just is. But sort of all of these standards could feasibly be reduced. Another one that comes up a lot in sort of feasibility of development is building height. So obviously, it costs a lot to build right now, and land values are very, very high. And so a builder might seek to maximize the density, or maximize the area, or the space that they can develop on a particular plot of land. And right now, for anything that is not business-oriented, across all of the zones, the maximum height is 35 feet. So three-ish stories, three and a half maybe, depending on how you count and the way that they go. It's interesting to note, this is something that we flag in the report, that in two of the, three of the zones, BD1, BD2, and C, that there is a provision that allows for 53 feet maximum height. And there's additional, you know, ways to get to that, you have to be set back a certain equivalent amount. But again, this speaks to a value judgment of, if 53 feet is a valid height maximum in certain areas of town for a particular use, might it also be a valid height maximum for other uses that are desired, like residential? Would that be beneficial? I leave that as an open question to you all. And then sort of the last big, this is actually on a separate table from this, but the, the broader, last big broad question about dimensional standards is minimum lot size. So in gray, as I understand it, there is no, there's no sewer, currently, public sewer. And so according to the state of Maine, the minimum lot size that you can have if you have no, if you are on septic, is 20,000 square feet. So that's one of those examples that we were alluding to earlier, where it's like, clearly for the health and safety of, you know, everybody, it makes sense that in certain circumstances, your minimum buildable, or your minimum lot size would be 20,000 square feet, because that is a standard that the state of Maine has set for you for environmental well-being. The 20,000 square foot minimum lot size is only the minimum lot size, I believe, and I might be missing one or two, but I'm pretty sure it's only the minimum lot size in the Village Center VC and Village Center proper, VCP. So does it make sense that your smallest lot size is in those areas that you're designating as like, oh, we'd like this to have a village feel? Absolutely. Is there any reason why 20,000 square feet couldn't also be the minimum lot size in MD or C or business transition or any of those? No, not necessarily. And so that's sort of another big lever that you all have as an opportunity to potentially play with, when you consider, can we get more housing on certain lots and areas of town by potentially lowering the minimum lot size? If we could move to the next slide, that'd be great. This is your zoning map. Big lovely... Big lovely blob of green, you know, sort of agriculture forest for that RRA, for the, you know, sort of rural residential feel, with a lot more happening around the corridors that, you know, come on, come together in the center of town. And so that's where you'll find your village center, and your village center proper, and your medium density, and snaking upwards the commercial and business development. Each of these zones, as we alluded to earlier, have different requirements per the dimensional standards of those zones, and they have different uses that are allowed in them. They, similar to the dimensional standards, however, the way that zone designations or zoning lines, zoning district lines are drawn, those were just decisions that people made in the past, and so they could be made differently today. So if you so wished, maybe some of the MD, the medium density district that is adjacent to the village center district, maybe some of that could reasonably be zoned as village center, and then therefore have all of the sort of more flexible standards that are appropriate to that. Maybe a commercial zone or a business transition zone would be better served as medium density. And of course, this is also part and parcel with the description of, or the decisions about what the appropriate dimensional standards for each zone is. So if you're saying, eh, we could actually loosen up sort of all of these, and then maybe the medium density district will become a little bit more feasible to build in, and so maybe it would be more attractive to housing development if more areas were zoned as such, or if more of the zones were VC, VCP. Also, some could be tightened up, some could be loosened up. It doesn't have to be all in one direction or another. It sort of speaks to that question of, what is the purpose of each of these districts? And it's helpful to have clear direction of, we want residential, or we don't want residential of this, 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 and this type in these zones to serve this purpose. And that might sort of help clarify a reasonable path forward, because again, all of these are, there's no right or wrong in these answers, and they can all be tweaked. The last item that just wanted to highlight particularly is, every town in Maine is required to have a area that is open to mobile home parks. And there is a mobile home park overlay that sort of overlaps with your medium density district, and it's a very particular area, it's, you know, pretty limited on the map. Mobile homes are one of the things that are considered like naturally occurring affordable housing, in the sense of, it's not subsidized, it is just a more affordable option that facilitates homeownership and development in, at lower costs, lower price points. And so, we would be remiss to not acknowledge that if the town of Gray is interested in expanding housing opportunity, one of the potentially easiest and least incentive-oriented, like financially investing ways to do it, is to expand your mobile home park overlay. So that's also an option and a lever that you have as well. If we could move to the next, which I think brings us into site plan, yes, thank you. So this gets on to our third big bucket, and then we'll be moving towards questions. In your site plan standards, it, there is a designation between a minor site plan and a major site plan, and to some degree, a town has discretion about what falls into either. And so certain minor site plans can be reviewed by, I believe, a staff committee, certain, once you hit major site plans, then you go to a planning board. When you go to a planning board, that's a public process, there's, you know, votes, and it just adds time and complication and uncertainty and expense. And so, up to a certain threshold, the council could give direction to empower staff to do more staff level reviews up to a certain point. Currently, there's some interesting, there's some in-the-weeds goofy interplay between site plan standards and subdivision standards, and when subdivision requirements of the state come into play. There's also some exceptions, that if you have site plan review, that you can sort of empower staff to do a certain level of review, as long as you're holding them to site plan standards also. There's also a couple bills in the legislature right now that are explicitly talking about the definition of subdivision, and discussing a working group, and maybe loosening it up. So all of this is just to say, right now, I think there's a little bit of room for you all to say, staff could maybe do more in committee, up to a certain number of units, up to a certain threshold of development. But especially after this legislative session, it will probably be worth considering if that has opened up the door to a few more options as well. This is, I, sort of something that is just universally an interesting discussion, parking standards. It's really, really, really hard to decide objectively what the right thing is, or what the right number of parking spaces per unit for different development patterns, what the appropriate number is. And there are different standards that folks have used historically, there's, you know, the technical manual of traffic engineers, and those have been revised over the decades. But it sort of doesn't necessarily capture the nuance and the complication of different council goals and different life experiences. So for instance, I share a car with my wife, we're a one-car household, we've also been a two-car household in the past. Does it make sense if somebody is building a development with us in mind, for it to be required that they provide 1.25 parking spaces, 1.5 parking spaces, one parking space, three parking spaces? Like, you could make an argument for each of those, but again, these are restrictions that are getting placed on the development process, and saying, you have to use a certain amount of your land and a certain amount of your development capital to provide a certain amount of parking, which may or may not be merited by the folks who move into that building. And so currently, there's different standards for, you know, multifamily, getting to that like 1.25 for a, you know, studio bedroom. I'm mixing up the specifics, but there's different tiers. But the question is, is it worth acknowledging, or making requirements over a certain threshold? Is it helpful to say, you have to build two spaces for certain kinds of units? Is one enough? Is saying, do a analysis and show your work and convince us and the planning board that you have sufficient parking? All of those are also equally valid options. But generally, parking is an expensive thing to have to produce, and so the more you are requiring it, the more of a barrier to potential housing development it is. The last thing that I wanted to just touch, that we just wanted to touch on was that there is actually a separate section of standards for multifamily development in the site plan review standards. So you've already gone through your subdivision, you've already gone through your zoning, and you've gotten into site plan, and there's, you know, standards that everybody has to meet for every kind of development. And so it is notable that then you get into a section at the end that says, oh, by the way, if you're doing a multifamily development, you also have to meet these additional, these additional standards. And that does things like adding a certain requirement for a buffer, dictating the distance between buildings. So, again, it sort of begs the question of, if the foundational level of development that has already been established, if there are certain rules that are being followed to say, hey, this is going to be acceptable development, does it make sense to then add an extra threshold for multifamily development? Because by adding that extra threshold, you're going to make it less flexible, less feasible, more difficult to build. And so, for instance, just thinking about places that folks might say, maybe the village center is an appropriate place for a multifamily development to occur. The village center is obviously defined generally by more constrained parcels, it's a, you know, it's not a huge area, and so at some point, having a requirement for a 50-foot buffer might be a real detriment to development in that area. Again, we're talking about a particular style of development in a particular district, so you could say, you know what, we don't really care if we don't touch the multifamily development standards, because what we're actually interested is, you know, three-family townhomes across the entirety of our jurisdiction. But again, we were just here to catalog all of the variety of ways that things might be preventing, or at least slightly getting in the way of housing. And I think that the next slide is, thank you and questions. Oh, sorry, no, I apologize. There is a 17-page report, it is, if you thought this was exciting, then boy, have I got something for you. Again, this is just identified as a series of ways to explore with your staff, with GPCOG, if you so desire, if you can be a resource, what your options are if you are inclined to facilitate more housing. And that there are a bunch, again, of levers you can pull, choices you can make, you also don't have to do any of them. This could go straight to the recycling bin, and the land use code could absolutely stay the way it is, and I will not be offended, GPCOG will not be offended, we are happy that we were able to provide you this service. But if there are things you're interested in exploring, you all can obviously debate it and consider it, and provide some directive to your extremely capable staff, and say, hey, if we want this, what are the things, like, let's explore X, Y, or Z. And that's a really reasonable path forward as well. So, we're here to help you, your staff is obviously here to help you, and if we can be helpful or answer questions moving forward, we obviously want to be able to be. So, I think, yeah, thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions as I can, as they come up.
Thank you, Christian, that was really in-depth. I found it really interesting.
I did.
Perhaps not everyone did, but I appreciate the effort, certainly. I had one kind of overarching question, but I want to open it up to others first before I get into that. Did anyone have questions they'd like to address?
The only question I had was in regards to parking. Do you take into consideration that, you know, what kind of an outlier we're not near a city? You know, because that was my only issue, I'm like, I don't know if that would work here to limit, you know?
And so that's a great question. I do not have a great answer to it, in the sense of, there are trade-offs inherent to all of these things, and complications to all of them. And so, that totally makes sense, and that is an absolutely valid point. Again, we were only thinking about it in the context of, is this a barrier to housing or not? None of the other things came in to play with that. As I understand it, I think there are some, you know, potential visions for what Gray's downtown might be in the future. So then you get into this whole other level of analysis of, if these things come to pass, if this vision is what's desired, might parking standards of a certain amount be getting in the way of that vision? So it gets even more complicated, but no, you're absolutely identifying a completely fair and valid concern that reasonable people could disagree about.
I have not so many questions at this point, as just sort of comments. I wanted to just make the point that the Open Space Committee has been meeting with developers off and on, or especially developers interested in subdivisions, whether or not they're open space subdivisions, to talk about kind of where, if they were to have open space, where they might go. And so, the committee has kind of moved to the point where, you know, in your slide that showed the, you know, the rocks and the wetland area, you know, that would be a satisfactory, I think, result for some subdivisions. I mean, I think that there are some angst in the town that, you know, over time, developers have migrated toward, especially those who are doing open space subdivisions, are basically using, or, you know, applying their undevelopable land, their kind of unusable land for recreational purposes, to satisfy the open space requirement. And so we've talked to the planning board about that, and tried to get them to, you know, to apply a little bit more pressure to developers. But the, I think your point is really well-taken, and it's interesting, is that we actually, and my understanding is, we don't actually have very many developers seeking to do open space developments in the town, subdivision developments in the town. So while we have these desires, and have expressed them through the zoning ordinances, in fact, they haven't been very useful in actually achieving our goals. And I think the committee would also say that they support your suggestion of reducing or eliminating buffer requirements for housing, especially new housing development, because it, first of all, it adds cost to the, you know, to the, because of road, longer road development, but they, it also sort of increases habitat fragmentation, and that's not desirable from an open space perspective. And they are not as concerned, I mean, this is just one's committee, so, but I would say they are not as concerned about minimizing building, the view of buildings from existing roads. Like, that should not be our most critical criterion for scoring some of these subdivisions. So I personally would really like to see us open up more of the town to multifamily development, I think it's a more efficient development pattern. You know, rental, we're badly in need, as a community, as a state, of more rental housing. And, you know, we have been pretty unfriendly to that kind of, type of housing in the past, so I'd definitely like to see, from my perspective, more of that. And we've talked to Doug Webster about allowing multifamily developments be, you know, also participate in open space kind of subdivision planning, just to sort of add those to that type of use, or that type of subdivision. So I guess those are just sort of a bunch of general thoughts right off the bat.
Yeah, those are great. Did you have anything to read by? I guess, yeah, just along those same lines, it's, I think our land use ordinance is definitely in need of attention. We are in the process of updating our zoning to address a lot of the things you touched on in this, particularly lot sizes and setbacks, and then redoing our zones in general. So I am, kind of my overarching question is, once we go, once we get further along in that process, could we potentially go through this again, or compare it to the results you have here, and see what language we maybe haven't still addressed with those revisions? So that's just one question. And it sounds like GPCOG could be a resource going forward, so we appreciate that. And then I just, I just wanted to say that I think overall, that the town, townspeople here in Gray would agree, just based on feedback we've received in our comprehensive planning, that the goal is to really maintain the rural quality of Gray and the village feel. And if our, open space subdivisions can be a critical tool in accomplishing that goal, because it really directs growth to your village centers, and allows for the preservation of open spaces outside of your village. But if that's not what, if our, if our standards are not accomplishing that goal, I think it would be really important to take a look at that. And it was interesting, I also found that the part interesting about, you know, the usable space of open space, because we've had a lot of conversation about what that, what that means, and what the best usable space might be. And I mean, it could be any number of things, I think we focus a lot on conservation or recreational spaces, but there's, you know, a lot of farms in Gray, and perhaps that's something to focus on. But it's definitely not, you know, I think you're right, Ian, that a lot of developers have been focusing on just preserving a space, whether, you know, so it's wetlands, or it's rocks, but that's not really, I feel like it's not really the intent of the open space subdivision, because the open space subdivision is really intent on preserving, you know, usable spaces. you know, usable spaces for the community. So, I think looking at that going forward would be an important tool. Yep.
I think, I just want to make one other point, which is sort of self-evident and you've already said this, actually, Christian, is that the land use patterns we see in Gray today are the result of zoning decisions made 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 years ago, right? Or, in some cases, like, not made, like, there was, you know, development happened prior to the existence of zoning. And some of that, we still kind of like today, you know? So, it's not that zoning is good and, you know, or bad or one way or the other. It is up to us to decide. And I think it's, I actually had several conversations over the last several weeks, including one on Gray Community Day, from a resident who was saying, well, yeah, I'm nervous about Gray becoming too densely developed. And, you know, the fact is that under our current zoning, Gray has grown considerably, especially in the last 10, 15 years or so, and would continue to grow if we didn't make a single change. And we just, because we can't simply draw up the bridges and prevent anybody else from developing here. So, the question is, where do we develop? And the comp plan was quite explicit that, you know, we want more growth to happen in the village area and that's, that is really the impetus behind the Village Transformation Project and the work that we've done on that. But obviously, we can't accommodate all the growth in the village and, you know, property owner, landowners may want to develop their land and have a right, you know, should have a right to do so in most cases in some way. So, I think, but I really, you know, if doing a subdivision, like a clustered subdivision, becomes too difficult, people will just pop a lot. You know, the laws allow people to, you know, develop a single lot every five years, I think, right? And so, that ends up with a more dispersed development pattern that doesn't use land efficiently. And the kind of thing that you were talking about, Christian, was more, you know, clustered subdivisions. And I do think that we should be incentivizing developers to kind of go in that direction and, because I think ultimately, we'll be happier with that kind of land use pattern. And then, the last thing I'll say is that I, many decades ago now, actually, I lived in Baltimore and I remember, now, obviously, Baltimore, big city, you know, big wastewater treatment system, so it's, you know, very different scenario. But to your point of commercial development that has residential above it, there was this one kind of like a shopping plaza that, no, in that case, it was a little higher end, but they, you know, there were shops and stores and restaurants and cafes and bars, you know, just a whole bunch of commercial stuff around the sort of perimeter of the parking at the ground level. And then, above it, there were, you know, even kind of high-rises of residential development. And it was a very highly valued, you know, place to live because you could access a whole bunch of stores and services and stuff just by getting in the elevator and going down to the ground floor. And so, I, obviously, we can't, you know, envision something on that scale right now, but, I want to, you know, this question comes up from time to time that, you know, we're trying to look like Westbrook or something like that and that's really not the case. And it's not, you know, just manager Mike Foley's decision to kind of drive toward a wastewater treatment system in this town. But in order to concentrate development in a smaller area, public, you know, wastewater is a requirement, really. It allows us to use that land more efficiently. We get more property taxes per acre of land when we do that and it just, it makes better sense for our town. So, I just want to kind of throw those observations out there because I've had conversations with people who are really kind of just unsure about where this is all going and would like to kind of freeze it as it is, but that's really not possible. And so, the question is, how do we grow going forward?
I think so. I had a couple of questions that bubbled up. Okay, that's fine. I had a couple of questions that bubbled up as we were talking. You mentioned opening up the areas in town where we allow Open Space subdivision. And I'm just curious how that might work in a setting like the village where there's less land to use for that type of development. I'm just curious.
So, and I should acknowledge that that wasn't studied in the sense of like feasibility. It was just an identification of, oh, it's interesting that it seems like this is a desired development pattern and it's not allowed everywhere, which may be appropriate. I think that gets to a question of, in certain areas where maybe there will be multiple parcels that could be consolidated, you, some, there may be large parcels in a huge variety of settings across the town of Gray and/or there may be a bunch of smaller parcels that the right developer would be interested in acquiring and consolidating and doing something on. And so, and I think to thread some of these conversations together, depending on the outcomes that are desired, you know, maybe there is a certain circumstance outside of or within the context of subdivisions that it may be desirable to have a four-unit building or a 16-unit building or a 30-unit building. I don't know what the scale is, but that by facilitating lower-sized requirements per dwelling unit, especially as you're considering things like investments in wastewater that might facilitate those things, that all of those go in, go hand-in-hand. And I think to build one step further from that, and I was struck by some of the comments that were just coming up about sort of the character and the divide and what can a town or should it look like? And actually, so on the, we don't need to go to this and I've actually never been to this place, the question slide was just sort of a classic downtown. And I think it was Ellensville, New York, and it was from the Wikipedia page. And this is sort of an interesting thought exercise that I think some of my colleagues and I have been working through, which is, you can have a distinctly rural place. Ellensville, New York is not a metropolis by any stretch of the imagination. My mother-in-law grew up in Bangor, Michigan, which is like a tiny, tiny town. And all of these places, you know, it might be a rural town in Iowa, a ton of them have a traditional, small-scale downtown that nobody would ever qualify as a big booming metropolis. These are distinctly urban places. Oh, sorry, these are distinctly rural places. And also, in a distinctly rural place, there may be a certain level of consolidation that still tracks with that pattern. And so, it can look different in different places. It doesn't have to look like what exists today. It doesn't have to look like what existed in the past. But just acknowledging that there is some nuance, I think, between what feels like a binary right now of either you're rural Gray or you're downtown Portland. And there's a lot of nuance in between those. And then, all of these decisions tie into one another about, you know, what is the vision that we want and how can we get there? And I think maybe most importantly, to reiterate the point of just, if you know what development pattern you'd like to see, then your staff can help you craft that to be feasible. And you can talk with potential developers and say, you know, would you ever bite at this apple? But just because an option exists in your zoning code doesn't mean that they'll magically appear. And so, even if it's, there aren't explicit barriers to it, maybe because of land values or development patterns or hurdles of any number of ways, maybe those subdivision patterns wouldn't develop in the village center. Maybe there is something similar to it that you're hoping for or desiring that staff could help guide you towards ordinances that might crack, like, might enable that. But again, it's always helpful as you do that to have the lens of, will anybody actually take us up on this? Is there actually an appetite for it? And that might be where a situation where discussing with, you know, developers and other sort of parties that are, you know, in that game, that that could maybe help provide some clarity.
Yeah, that's a good point. I think we, a former counselor used to note that, you know, we've designated commercial zones around town, but generally, they're not being developed in that sort of space. So, yeah, we're, just because we think an area is a great place to be developed, it's not necessarily where a developer would choose to do so. So, I think having those conversations are important, too, with the business community, certainly. Any final thoughts for Christian?
I guess just, I think, I appreciate your comments about parking requirements because in the United States, there, you know, just nationwide, there are vastly many more parking spaces than there are people or cars. And that means a lot of the time, they're not being used. And I think, you know, there are people living in the village now who have told me, like, I'm living here because I can't drive, whether they can't afford a car or they have vision problems or other disabilities that prevent them from driving. And so, you know, why does it make sense for them to have, you know, for, you know, a parking space that they can't use? And it chews up an immense amount of real estate and that might be more profitably used because we don't tax parking spaces. So, anyway, just a thought on that.
Well, thank you for taking the time to come out here and all the work that was put into this analysis. We certainly appreciate it. And well, my term is up, but I'm sure folks will be looking forward to the housing analysis coming up in the new year also.
It was our pleasure and we always love to talk with our member communities about land use code. So, thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Christian.
All right, thanks, Christian.
Before we adjourn, we do have a couple of minutes. If anyone, does anyone need to discuss anything that's not on the agenda or do we just want to take a break? Or we could go right in, technically, we could go right into our 7 o'clock meeting. Yeah?
I'm happy to move on.
Okay. Maybe we just take a quick, like, 10-minute break for, you know, a snack and, you know, anything else and we'll reconvene. So, we'll begin our regularly scheduled council meeting at 6:45. And we are adjourned. Thank you.[1390.71] Welcome back to those watching from the workshop on. This is the regular town council meeting of May twentieth, twenty twenty-five. We are beginning a little bit early. Our workshop ended early, but as noted on the agenda, we do plan to begin workshops early if if we can do so because the workshops ran a little short. But we will hold off any voting items on our council meeting agenda this evening until the seven o'clock hour. The meeting is being held in person and online, and the team's link to join our online meeting, if you'd like to make a comment, is available in the header of the agenda, which is available on the town website. I'll begin with roll call. Councillor Johnson.
Present.
Councillor Robinson.
Present.
Councillor Gass.
Present.
I'm Councillor Chappell, and to my right is Town Manager Michael Foley, and we're also joined by Town Clerk Britt Barton in the back of the room. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Does anyone have any edits that they would like to make to the May sixth, twenty twenty-five minutes?
None.
Does anyone is anyone opposed to unanimous consent of the minutes?
No.
No.
No. Okay, so those are approved, and I will move on to council communications. First up is the report from the council chair. I don't have many items, but I just wanted to take a minute to thank staff and all those who were able to attend the volunteer recognition awards that we held last week. They were really well attended, and we gave out a lot of really deserving awards to many organizations and members of the community doing really great work for the last two years here in Gray. And that was really special to have a formal event again after having several years of kind of pandemic era volunteer recognitions outdoors at the Blueberry Festival. It's nice to have a designated space and time to honor those individuals and groups. So thank you to everyone who attended and helped organize that. Also, I want to thank the Wild Blueberry Festival Committee for their work in organizing this Sunday's Gray Community Day. I'll get into the details later, but it was very well attended also, even do even with some spotty weather. So hopefully that tradition will continue going forward. We also had a request from Representative Graham to come and speak about her work at the legislature, and it looks like she might be able to join us at our next meeting on June third. I provided a couple of ideas of what I was interested in having her talk about. I think, Anne, you did the same, but if others have items they'd like the representative to discuss in her time here, I believe you're all copied on the email. And if you're not, let me know, and I can get you that information so that you can share your thoughts also. And finally, I just want to recognize there are some departures coming up, and I'm sure Town Manager will talk about it too, but I know Joshua Tiffany is moving on. He's got some family commitments that have caused him to leave, and also Doug Webster's retirement is coming up shortly. So my term is ending in June, so I just wanted to take a minute to thank them both for their commitment to the town, and we will sorely miss their contributions. That's all I had for the evening. So I will move on to correspondence and committee reports. Mike, do you want to start us off?
Sure. I did not have a lot of correspondence. I did get the letter from Brad Roseberry opposing heavier trucks. I did not receive the the Anne message, so if that could be forwarded to me, that'd be great.
Yep.
And then for committees, tomorrow, we have the ZBA walk through and then the meeting afterwards. And then following a week from tomorrow is another ZBA meeting as well. And, you know, you can get that information online for both of those meetings. And I also would like to, you know, say what a great job last week was. I think it was done very well. I'd like to congratulate Anne on her award. That was well deserved, and everyone else that received rewards. I think, you know, it shows what a great community we have here and the outstanding work that so many of us do in this town to make this a better place.
Thanks, Mike. Levi?
All right, I had the Dry Mills Schoolhouse Committee meeting last night, and I know everyone's lost sleep over this, so I'm happy to note that the flag debacle has finally been resolved, and now it's thirty-eight stars rather than the twenty-eight stars it had, unfortunately, which is somewhere in the eighteen fifties, where it's twenty-eight stars rather than eighteen ninety. So they finally got it resolved. Overall engagement during Community Day for GMS was very high, and they made a connection with a homeschool organization that wants to bring Michelle in to teach the curriculum and then schedule a trip to the schoolhouse later in the year. And then finally, with Memorial Day coming up, I just want to quickly thank Call the Active and Retired Servicemen and Women, both in and outside of the community.
Thank you. Yeah, that's a good point. Anne?
Yeah, I didn't have any other correspondence other than what Mike Johnson flagged. Open Space met with the executive directors of the two land trusts that serve Gray, the Royal River Conservation Trust and Presumskut Regional Land Trust. Both executive directors are relatively new in their roles, so it's the first time the committee had met with them. We reviewed what their priorities are and and kind of how to work with them to conserve land in Gray going forward. That was a useful meeting. A reminder that the the town budget vote is is coming up and that warrant article number thirteen would set aside five hundred thousand dollars from our undesignedated fund balance for the town's land acquisition reserve fund. And while the town doesn't want to be in the land conservation business, like, we don't want to necessarily own land, sometimes we do need to contribute to land purchases, and those those purchases are often kind of layer cakes of of financing. And having some funds on hand in order to be able to move relatively quickly on those opportunities would would be really helpful, and and use of the reserve fund would require a public hearing. So I hope you'll support that when you vote. The Resiliency Committee, Resiliency received the Committee of the Year Award at the Volunteer Recognition Event, and I I'm just so proud of them, that the small but mighty crew continues to do great work with the help of our staff and our Resiliency fellow. We met this this evening, in fact, they worked met this evening earlier. I wasn't able to attend the whole thing because of our earlier workshop, to finalize language in the surface water protection ordinance that we hope to bring to the council this summer and to conduct their other business. Work on the second video is underway. They participated in Gray Community Day as did Open Space, and the Resiliency Committee had a really fun, hands-on exhibit where you could sprinkle kind of pollution on a model of a watershed and then spray water on it to show where it ends up. And so hint, it ends up in streams and lakes, which are, you know, that's what happens with watersheds. And so the work on the townwide watershed management plan also continues through our consultant, the Cumberland County Soil and Water Conservation District. And again, we hope to bring that to the council this summer. So stay tuned, because you'll be hearing a lot from the Resiliency Committee coming up. C-TAC wasn't scheduled to meet this month, it hasn't, and the VTP, I have no update on that, but I understand Michael had a a meeting recently he may want to mention. That's it for me.
Thanks, Anne. Just for me, the greater Portland Council of Governments met a little early this month, so I reported on that at our last meeting, but we will be having the annual summit on May twenty-ninth, which I'll be in attendance for, and we're actually voting on some delegates this evening to supplement my attendance. The Ordinance Advisory Committee is not scheduled to meet before the end of this session. I'm not sure, I haven't had an update from Doug, and I know he's, you know, shortly retiring, so I'm not sure we'll be convening again before the end of this session. So that's the update there. The Gray Wild Blueberry Festival Committee did not meet in May because they were busy planning the Community Day and finalizing details around that and didn't really need a group meeting to do so. They are planning to meet on June ninth, which is the day before our municipal elections. I was planning to attend, but I now have a work conflict, so I won't be able to attend that last meeting, but somebody, I'm sure, will fill my shoes when the new session begins. I did have an update from Lisa Lena Gilmore, who coordinates all of the Gray Community Day activities, which the wild, like, as I mentioned, the Wild Blueberry Festival manages that, and I wanted to just read her summary she sent along of the day because I was not able to attend over the weekend, but I my understanding it was very well attended. So I just wanted to read that for the record. The third, so this is from Lisa. "The Third Annual Gray Community Day took place on Sunday, May eighteenth, and successfully brought together well over three hundred community members for a day of education and fun. The day began with the Mary Sweeney Underwoods Memorial Walk, which had forty participants. It was a touching tribute with Mary's son in attendance. Those who knew and loved his mother shared heartfelt stories with him and let him know how proud she was of him. Community Day's major sponsor was Maine State Credit Union, which not only helped fund the day, but they also generously provided two ten by ten tents for our use and sent four volunteers to to host our welcome table. We can't thank Gray Shop and Save enough for once again donating everything needed for the very popular free ice cream sundaes." I was I was sad I missed that. "The chili cook-off continues to grow each year. We had eight contestants this year, up from four in the first year and six last year. All the chefs brought their best, and we were proud to be able to award cash prizes to the winners. First place, one hundred dollars; second place, sixty dollars; third place, forty dollars. Our heartfelt admiration goes out to all the chili chefs for their hard work and delicious entries. There was a wide variety of fun activities for children of all ages to enjoy throughout the day, and Gray Recreation had a formal ribbon cutting for the new basketball and pickleball courts. The success of the event would not have been possible without the help of twenty-nine dedicated volunteers, nineteen of whom were members of the Gray New Gloucester High School's Community Service Club. Their energy and commitment kept everything running smoothly from setup to cleanup. As I write this, it strikes me every person manning the Community Day tables was also a volunteer. Rosalynn Carter once said, 'Without volunteers, we'd be a nation without a soul.' Gray Community Gray Community Day was that soul in action. My thanks to Kyle and Britt, who took charge of calculating the chili rank voting results. Thank you to Claire, Kayla, and Inga, who continually helped me in many ways while keeping me somewhat sane. Special shout out to Mo, who has who, as always, was indispensable from the planning stage straight through to execution, and to Anthony, who stayed around until the soggy end to help with the breakdown. All that aside, Gray Community Day's sole purpose is to connect our residents with local nonprofit services and inspire volunteerism. This year, we took a major leap forward by hosting twenty-four informational tables, a fifty percent increase from last year's sixteen, showcasing the vital work of nonprofits and town of Gray committees. It is my hope that we honored our purpose and made a meaningful impact." And I just want to thank Lisa for that really detailed report. And I I also want to just reiterate her her last sentence in that I do think this is a very meaningful thing we're doing, and any opportunity we have to engage with the community in these, you know, festive events that, you know, just bring people together and with some camaraderie, I think is a huge benefit to town. So thank you for the committee and for Lisa for reporting out on that. And that's all I had for reports and correspondence, so I'll move on to the Town Manager's Report.
Sure, let me just bring up my slides real quick. Just want to remind everyone about the table talk with the Town Manager. We have the upcoming one start on June second at twelve at Two Moms on Main Street. They are offering free coffee to anyone who'd like to come in, and they have great meals. So I wanted to remind everybody about that. But also, again, you don't need to come to that to talk with me. You can set up an appointment with me anytime. I'll flex my schedule in order to accommodate folks to be able to meet with them and discuss any town concerns or questions or anything they may have regarding the town and my ability to help them. Just want to remind everyone, we continue to have open positions at recycling and solid waste or in our recycling solid waste department, also known as the transfer station. We have some openings at the library, including the director position, of which that posting closes this week. We hope to be able to start the hiring process, review process with that soon, as we have received a number of good applicants. Just want to remind everyone, earlier this month, I forgot to put this slide up to let everyone know about Municipal Clerks Week, and here's a photo of our clerk staff and the great job that they do to serve everyone in the community on a daily basis. Many of these employees are some of the only people that the that residents may encounter in the town to pay their taxes or register their vehicle, and they always create a positive experience. So just want to thank them for all they do and the celebration of Municipal Clerks Week earlier this month. And then I want to echo some of the comments of others. We had the volunteer award ceremony. I put a few photos from the event here on my slides, but check out the town's most recent newsletter from our website, where you can see a lot more details about different awards that were awarded and the who and and photos from each of the specific awards. So it was a great recognition. Glad to help bring that event back for the community, and thank you to staff, specifically Britt and Kyle, for the great work they did to help me organize that event. And then just showed some quick photos from Community Day, echoed the thanks of all the staff that were able to be there, and a few photos here, the ribbon cutting of the basketball court, pickleball complex that that came out very nice, and looking forward to seeing that in full use, and then some of the other photos from the events that took place and some staff that were there. And then just a few general updates. Want to continue to remind everyone about our digital newsletter to sign up to see a lot of the great information that I'm sharing now, as well as our Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony, which is coming up on this Monday, May twenty-sixth. The parade begins at eleven AM. I've got word it might start a little bit late because some people come from the New Gloucester Parade, which ends just before, but I'll be there. And the parade, the Legion has asked me to join to represent the town, so I'll be there and also sharing a few words in the ceremony that they have at the end of the Legion, as I did last year. It's not listed on our agenda, but we do have an upcoming workshop at our next meeting on June third, where we'll have a presentation of the fiscal year twenty-three audit, which is a long awaited and overdue document that we've been working to to get completed. And then want to remind everyone about Election Day on June tenth regarding number of municipal school and water district positions on the ballot, as well as the municipal budget and school budget validation. And that's all I have. Madam Chair, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. And I would just encourage everyone to check out all the documentation. And I would just encourage everyone to check out all the documentation on our website around the budget. I think this year's documentation is much improved. I know that you and Kyle and staff have worked really hard on making some really clear information available, and I think that new ClearGov software has been very useful. And you also, you and Kyle also produced a video this week that I thought was very informative, so you could check that out too, if you just want a quick synopsis, so that was great. And I will open it up to public comments. I just want to remind folks, I don't think there's anyone online, but if anyone would like to make a comment online, just please raise your hand, your virtual hand, or if you'd like to come on video and raise your physical one, so that we know that you'd like to make a comment. And anyone in the audience here, you're welcome to come up and make a comment. We just ask that you limit your comments to three minutes for this portion of the agenda. Anyone? Yep, come on up.
Dan McGuire, Johnson Road, Gray. "In light of the fact that Memorial Day is just around the corner, I was doing a little reading the other day, and I bumped into something I thought I'd just take a second to read, a little history lesson, actually. General Order Number 11 from the Headquarters, the Grand Army of the Republic, Washington, DC, May 5th, 1868. One, the 30th day of May, 1868, is designated for the purpose of strewn with flowers or otherwise decorating the graves of comrades who died in defense of their country during the late rebellion, and whose bodies now lie in almost every city, village, and hamlet churchyard in the land. In this observance, no form of ceremony is prescribed, but posts and comrades will, in their own way, arrange such fitting services and testimonials of respect as circumstances may permit. We are organized comrades, as our regulations tell us, for the purpose, among other things, of preserving and strengthening those kinds and fraternal feelings which are bound together, soldiers, sailors, and marines, who unite to suppress the late rebellion. What can aid more to assure this result than by cherishing tenderly the memory of our heroic dead, who made their breasts a barricade between our country and its foes? Their soldier lives were the revelry of freedom, to a race in chains, and their deaths the tattoo of rebellious tyranny in arms. We should guard their graves with sacred vigilance. All that the concentrated wealth and taste of the nation can add to their adornment and security is but a fitting tribute to the memory of her slain defenders. Let no wanton foot tread rudely on such hallowed grounds. Let pleasant paths invite the coming and going of reverend visitors and fond mourners. Let no vandalism or arrears or neglect nor ravages of time testify to the present or to the coming generations that we have forgotten, as a people, the cost of a free and undivided republic. If other eyes grow dull and other hands slack and other hearts cold in the solemn trust, ours shall keep it well as long as the light and warmth of life remains to us. Let us then, at the time appointed, gather around their sacred remains and garland the passionless mounds above them with the choicest flowers of springtime. Let us raise above them the dear old flag they saved from dishonor. Let us in this solemn presence renew our pledges to aid and assist those who they have left among us, a sacred charge upon the nation's gratitude, the soldiers and sailors, widows and orphans. It is the purpose of the Commander in Chief to inaugurate this observance with the hope that it will be kept up from year to year. While a survivor of the war remains to honor the memory of his departed comrades, he earnestly desires the public press to call attention to this order and lend its friendly aid in bringing it to the notice of comrades in all parts of the country in time for simultaneous compliance here within. The Department commanders, we use every effort to make this order effective by the order of General John A. Logan, Commander in Chief." I think General Logan would probably be extremely pleased with the way his order has carried forward, and it was, it just kind of struck me, so I thought it was worth sharing. So I hope everyone has a good Memorial Day. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that, Dan. It says there's three people online, but I only see names for two who are staff, so...
Yeah, there's two staff and the GCTV, which is the thing that runs that.
Oh, okay, so there's no...
There's no, I have it all, I have the list all right here.
Okay.
There's no one.
All right.
If I may mention one item, I forgot to mention my report.
Sure.
The recent department reports were also included in the packet, as well as a financial report, and we are right on track for the budget to finish out the fiscal year, so looking forward to finalizing that as well.
Yeah, thank you. I did note that in our packet, but I appreciate you noting it here.
I'd just like to also thank Mike for, you and the staff for volunteering on Sunday. That's a great turnout. I mean, that's so great to have so many people support our community and their staff to support you on the days off.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. Okay, there's no one in the room left to make a public comment, so I will close public comments of non-agenda items, and we do not have any old business to consider, so I'll move on to new business. And first up is Order 2425-22, charitable cribbage tournament at Birchwood Brewing, so I'm looking for a motion to consider that.
Second.
Anne, Mike's second. Do you want to give a little background on this, Mike?
Sure. This was a request for a charitable cribbage tournament to take place at Birchwood Brewing, and the application requires approval from the municipal officers, which is what you guys serve. So it's not common that gambling events, you know, occur in the community, but given the nature, they just want the community to be aware of it.
Okay, yeah, I saw that they had to get approval from the state before coming here to the municipal...
Yes, they had to get approval from the gambling control board.
I guess, just one question I had in their, I guess the application made it feel like it was a one-time event, but then their application noted it was happening on multiple days per week, and I was just wondering if this is something that's running year-round from here on out, or if it was just a one-time?
Britt handled the application, so if you want to come forward and speak to what their full intent is, Britt's our Town Clerk.
So, this is something that they intend to do year-round. It gives them the opportunity to hold these charitable cribbage tournaments whenever necessary, so this application will give them the opportunity to do it for five years. They'll have to apply every year, but your approval is good for five years. We do something similar for the American Legion for their bingo, so it's very similar to that.
Okay, thanks for clarifying, because it just wasn't totally clear in the application. Thank you. Did anyone else have questions?
I thought it was a great idea.
Yeah, same. It's fun to have charitable events that are also just fun. Okay, so if there's no other comments, I will go to vote. Anne?
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And also a yes. Okay. Next up are appointments to the General Assembly, delegate appointments to the General Assembly for Greater Portland Council of Governments. So I'm looking for a motion to appoint Councillor Johnson as a delegate and Town Manager Michael Foley as an alternate to the General Assembly. And then, this won't affect, I'm already a delegate, so we don't need to re-vote.
This is just replacing the previous delegate, which was a former council, Councillor McGuire, and then adding me as an alternate, if for some reason any one of the councils are absent.
Right, okay, so, but mine is still valid without voting on it.
Yeah, you're already a designated delegate. These are just new designations.
Okay, so I'm looking, are you still available to go?
The 29th, yes, yeah.
Before we vote on? So, yeah, so looking for a motion, as I mentioned, to designate Michael Johnson as a delegate and Town Manager Michael Foley as an alternate.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? I just want to thank Mike and Mike for attending, and I will see you both there. Okay, I'll go to vote. Anne?
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And also a yes. And I believe, oh, no, we have to do the election. So now I'm just looking for a motion to countersign the notice of election for MSAD 15. The Gray Town Council hereby countersigns the notice of election, calling Maine School Administrative District #15 District referendum to be held at the New Begin Hall, 22 Main Street, in the town of Gray on Tuesday, June 10th, 2025, for the purpose of determining the question attached. And you'll see in your packet on page 38 the question that will appear on the referendum. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
I'll give it, Levi and second. Any comments or questions? We're just legally required to vote on this, to put it on the warrants for the election.
Yeah, this is an annual item that's required. It doesn't give the council any authority or say in regards to the question, but we are the administrative authority which oversees the elections, and therefore that's required by state statute for us to countersign.
Right, so just to clarify for folks watching, we're not voting yes or no on the school budget right now, we're just voting to allow people to vote on it on June 10th. Okay, so I will go to vote. Mike?
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
And also a yes. And I believe that's it for new business, so I will open it up again for our final public comment. We still don't have any individuals online. We just have one individual here present. Would you like to make another comment? No? Okay. I will close the public comment at 7:14 p.m. We don't have any new referrals. There are still current referrals pending here, which I'm sure will be revisited once there's a new council in June. And then we have upcoming meetings on June 3rd, which it sounds like we have a workshop at 5:30, and then we have Election Day on June 10th. So, and there's no executive session this evening, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn at what might be the earliest we've ever left this room at 7:14 p.m.
So moved.
Second.
I'll give it Mike and Levi's second. Is anyone opposed to unanimous consent?
No.
Okay, have a good night, everyone.